Meeting will now come to order. Please, please, as to the required persons.
I am the United States of America. This is a report of which stands on the nation under data. The individual, the liberty and justice of our citizens.
Dr. Keenan.
Yes, I'm here.
Dr. Fisher. Dr. Hovia. Thank you. I would like to remember that this Fisher is running.
Yes, sir.
This is.
Yes.
Officer. 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 He's been moved to second in the group of members. For March ninth, March twelve, or March twenty-third. Are there any questions on this matter? Here, remember to call the vote.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Aye.
Dr. Keenan.
Aye.
Dr. Hovia.
Aye.
Motion, please. You have any communication?
Yes, I do. I have a treasure report for the month of April. And the good state record is forty-four million, one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. So the expenditures for the same period is totally thirty-seven million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. The budget is fifty-six million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Benchmark spending is at seventy-five percent. The percentage of budget expended to date is total sixty-six point nine-eight percent. The cash balance at March thirty-first is seventeen million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Incumbrances total three million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. And the other unincumbent balance at March thirty-one is thirteen million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. That concludes my report. Thank you.
You have any communication?
None, not ever.
Thank you. We will go to our reports of the minutes. Senator Education Committee Committee. Mr. Sportsman, please.
Yes, sir.
Or will that settle the speech?
No, thank you, John. I'll do it.
You should.
But yes, yes, yes. Just get those in line, if I say I think there's nothing on.
Oh, I think he asked you. He doesn't see the bill. Bill didn't go out.
And Madam President, bills didn't go out, having no report or agreement. There were both education. Madam President, I was hoping this Fisher would be here to read this. Unfortunately, I was sitting in that position with Hovia's attorney. So I am not prepared to accept a objection because we have on the education unit. I will not give anything.
Why don't we wait for this issue to change? Let's go to the reports of the minutes. If any, please.
There are ten resolutions. One, resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to Ed. Doc. Solutions LLC for license agreement for software and print maintenance agreements. Then, further, I move that this resolution is accepted.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to authorize a contract with Ed. Doc. Solutions LLC for license agreement for software and print maintenance agreements. Any questions or discussions? Call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion, please.
Number two, resolution to approve advances, return for advances, and for transfers to various funds from the general fund and from other funds of the 2014 through 2015 fiscal year. I move that this resolution is accepted.
Second. We move to the second amendment. The resolution to approve resolutions, to approve advances, returning advances, and for transfers to various funds from the general fund and from other funds of the 2014 through 2015 fiscal year. Call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Aye.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number three, resolution to approve the then announced certificate for justice for an obligation made prior to obtaining the purchase order. I move that this resolution is accepted.
Second.
Mr. Wood, the senator, the deputy vice chancellor of the justice for an obligation made prior to obtaining the purchase order. Questions for discussion?
Madam President, I just want to mention that we have extensive discussion about this matter.
Thank you. Any questions for discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Aye.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number four, resolution to enroll in the Ohio School of Workers' Compensation with expected waiting program for Ohio Association of Teachers. This is official and the Ohio School Board Association. I move that this resolution is accepted.
Mr. Wood, the senator, the deputy vice chancellor of the resolution to enroll in the Ohio School Board Association to register state and waiting program with the Ohio Association of School District officials and the Ohio School Board Association. Any questions for discussion? We call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number five, resolution to authorize the Fifth Amendment to the Ohio School Facilities Commission Project Construction Agreement. I move that the government will be accepted.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to authorize the Fifth Amendment to the Ohio School Facilities Commission Project Construction Agreement. Questions for discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan. Yes. Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number six, resolution to authorize a transfer of funds in the amount of eight hundred thousand five hundred and seventy dollars of the general fund to the classroom facilities, Fund One, Zero, One, O. In accordance with requirements of the Fifth Amendment to the Ohio School Facilities Commission Project Construction Agreement. I move that this resolution is accepted.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to authorize a transfer of funds to the general fund. In accordance with requirements of the Fifth Amendment to the Ohio School Facilities Commission Project Construction Agreement. Any questions for discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number seven, resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to Print. I move that this resolution is accepted.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to authorize a contract with Ed. Doc. Solutions. Questions for discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Aye.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number eight, resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to Concord Technology Group. I move that this resolution be accepted.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to authorize a contract with Ed. Doc. Solutions. Questions for discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number nine, resolution to reconsider transfer of unexpendable balance of building fund to general fund, ORC, five seven zero five point fourteen. I move that this resolution is accepted.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to reconsider transfer of unexpendable balance of building fund to general fund, ORC, five seven zero five point four two. Questions for discussion? Call the vote, please.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Number ten, resolution to correct errors and or make modifications to the minute record of the Board of Education of the East Cleveland Sixth Street District. I move that this resolution is accepted.
Is there a second? Motion, please. That is the last.
Madam President, I conclude my report with finality.
Thank you. I'm sorry, call the vote.
Madam President, I first item this professional agency board members. Ms. Christian, I attend the Northeast Regional Legislative Leader, the highest authority from OSBL and Board Leadership Institute in Columbus, offered by Oklahoma School Board Association. I move that this resolution.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to... What questions for board members? Stay in your place, well. Questions for discussion? Call the vote, please.
Dr. Hovia. Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Keenan. Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Resolution number two is the acceptance of a donation of a filming fingerprinting machine from RTT Technical Institute for the criminal justice class. I will accept this donation.
Mr. Wood, the senator, accept the donation. ITT Technical Institute for one thousand dollars for federal justice rights. Questions for discussion? Call the vote, please.
Dr. Hovia. Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please.
Madam President, I conclude the resolutions for the Board of Public Relations.
Thank you. This is the recommendation of the superintendent. Call the vote.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to recommend those I just listed, the other inventions that are superintendent, how a major's person, the six or four.
Is there a second?
I move, Madam President, I move that the recommendations of Superintendent Page thirteen to through sixteen.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. Accept the recommendations of Superintendent Page thirteen through sixteen. Questions for discussion? Call the vote, please.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Aye.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Motion, please. Do things as next, right, please?
Um, who should have voted for you?
We'll go back to the change, you can go. Paul, please, still go to the table. This pleasure.
Madam President, because I stated really that I'm not a doctor. I've got the other post, I believe in our superintendent, so I read the resolution based on my belief in her. Resolution number one is to approve a contract with and payment to University Circle E further connection program. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to approve a contract with and payment to University Circle E future connections program. Questions for discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Motion, please.
Number two is resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to Roots of American Music, Rowan. And I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to Roots of American Music Program. Questions for discussion? Call the vote.
Ms. Westbrook.
Aye.
Dr. Hovia. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Xavier Priest.
Yes.
Motion, please.
Number three is a resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to Judge Liam Dawson. And I move that we adopt this resolution.
A second.
We move to the second amendment. The resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to Judge Liam Dawson. You were not in the meeting.
That's correct.
And I... Resolution number one, please. Resolution.
Yes, Madam President, this resolution is seeking what appropriate to allow Judge Liam Dawson opportunity to specifically work with students at Shaw, Shaw Academy. If the judge Dawson, if we bring that program, it's all finished first. The program will be additional alternatives to services to twenty-five students. The training focuses on education, educate, excuse me, the participants about the criminal legal system and laws. Additionally, the training include education, conflict resolution, and advantage and self-discipline in post-social behavior. The course will be taught a weekly basis, one hour to an hour and a half, approximately, as I said. Participants will be twenty-five in number. Judge Dawson will provide course materials, books, videos, manuals, working materials, presenter's skill trips, and guest speakers.
Thank you. Any other questions, please? Call the vote, please.
Ms. Westbrook. Ms. Xavier Priest. Dr. Keenan.
Yes.
Dr. Hovia.
Motion, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Hovia, report on the education and use of words.
They have a bad tune. Expect many years. Eight, twelve. I think it's seven, five. Do you have any news? Expresses from the committee? Would be important, Mr. Speaker.
Let him go first. Officials on the board of the school system. I have in my hand, remember, ran the Ohio Department of Services Commission. This is the commission who is hand in hand with the Ohio General Assembly. General Assembly writes the laws, statutes of state of Ohio. It determines the role of mayors, prosecutor, school boards, library boards, and all of that. This letter is response to my letter to them that asks about the authority of school boards in Ohio override the boards. And according to this letter, which is official from the Ohio Department of Services, there is nothing. No authority whatsoever for the library board after the point the statute states, school boards appoint to the library board. And that's, that's it. No further authority over the trust base in Ohio or in state of Ohio. And so I have this letter for you. If I can take it, then you can have it for your reference, but actually it proves no authority over contracting, no authority over budgeting, no authority over staffing. And those are the three areas that I asked them to cover. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm kind of baffled about anybody. If the person isn't pleased with on the board, on the elite, simple as that.
I'm sorry.
Keep, keep battling this board in reference to what you only have more board, you have authority to appoint. And, and I don't agree with that, because any person has the authority to appoint someone in any position. They certainly have some responsibility to that person who appointed you. So even the... Don't understand. Well, even the Supreme Court has some, have to have something. So what? Make this person think that you don't have no authority. But I'm not wasting time on that, because to me, that's being a devil.
Don't waste your time on that library board.
But I am.
You're working hard, so we can move on. My boss is baffled when you want to know that joke.
What I am concerned about, that we have, and I'm going to call a name, because I know it's going to go back to, get back to it, so he'll say, well, he said the same thing. We have a mayor from the city of East Cleveland have held a meeting, some podium, whatever you want to call it, on last Thursday at the McGregor home. And you have to keep it to believe that, that if East Cleveland is annexed or merged with another municipality, the only two municipalities have any connection with the city would be Cleveland and East Cleveland, that the school district kind of like a separate entity. And please excuse my adjective that I'm going to use. Any food knows that if the city is annexed by another municipality, we have no longer, everything in, in this municipality goes. School, library, court, city, city, city hall of East Cleveland, everything goes, even the light bulb goes. That's annexation. So anyone say anything different than that, they are lying to you. Please do not believe that. How an incompetent group knows that this city, school district, remain here, where is it going to get its support? Where is it money going to come from? It cannot function separately. Everything in the municipality under the auspices of East Cleveland goes. There's no separation. If you look up the word annexation, that means it takes in whatever falls on the, fall on the annexation. So I'm saying to this school district, to this board, and to the superintendent, and to the educators out here, that this school district will go with Cleveland. It would be no longer East Cleveland School District. It would be Cleveland or Cleveland Heights if they're successful in that. However, the residents, the electors of this city has the last say as to what takes place. And I just hope that the superintendent, this board, and that our educators here in the city would teach the kids that, that the parents know what will take place. We wouldn't be no more East Cleveland School District. We would be Cleveland Municipal School District. And it closed down Shaw High School, and kids will be bused to whatever school they want to go, because we have no more say. We have no more say as to a city once it is annexed or merged or whatever. So I just want to come to you to tell you that, because some people was disillusioned. He sat up there and told all those lies and convincing lies, and we so gullible, some of us accepted that, what he was saying. So I would refute him if he was standing right there today, and I said the same thing, and I said it at City Council meeting. So he told people a bunch of lies and used a scare tactic. And we are falling, some of us are falling for it, because annexation doesn't work that way. And then, my last, he said his last, and I'm...
All in here, what you're doing.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, okay? The last thing, he circulated petition, and it misleading again with how he headed the petition, saying it starts out annexation, merge of what happened. Then at the last down there, one little line, oh, a commission, we want to point a commission to study. And to make recognition and bring that to the school board, whether, I mean, our school board, to council, whether we should do. And he demanded that the council, uh, accept the things that I told you, there are a lot of his responsibility. And we need, and I'll say to any residents in here, we come to council and demand that Gary Norton follow the law of the city of East Cleveland. And that is putting a plan together for this city. He is totally eradicating all of the assets, and we sit back on our poster and let this man get away with it. He is derelict, responsible for which could cause him to lose his job or go to jail.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Mr. Stone, the news gave us the paperwork, and, um, what, and you said that you wanted to talk about a merger with Cleveland?
Yeah, that's basically, pretty much like, everybody knows that I've been on the front line with this thing, merger. And today, I said, I come to you guys, get a jump start, guys got to get going on, got to, got to wake up, because he kind of was right. When he, he is, he and I say, Mayor Gary Norton, I don't do that he stuff, it's Gary Norton, Norton. If Gary Norton gets his way, according to what he said last night on WTAM eleven hundred AM, he's got all kind of stuff. He's proposing lower taxes, he's got the, he's going to put the yellow brick road up and down Uphit, which is what his plans are to throw out to the people. But there won't be a, an East Cleveland school district, he's right about that, because this will be a part of the thing, might go, might not go right away, if, now, I'm not, I'm not even thinking about it, because we're recalling this guy. And we've got a petition to recall, and that's why I came here, to get you guys to understand that we need some help. We need some people to come out and help us out, get the signatures we need, and need a lot for this school. Because Norton has his way, this is the mayor, I never heard, I have never, ever heard a mayor sell out a city, and a city go for it. And this city is fighting on it like, like crazy, they're actually thinking it's a good thing, they're going to get better, better streets. And I tell them, I say, go across the tracks and see the streets across the tracks, that's Cleveland, that's not East Cleveland, and they're going to see some things. But this school board has remained silent, so it became time, of course, on four four one one choose news dot com. And I've been on a lot of news lately, yesterday I covered a lot of news, including the accident that happened up there in Terrace. And what's really strange was, when we got to the radio show, Gary Norton, instead of talking about the tragedy that just happened, he was talking about the murder plan. That was always on his mind, he didn't care about the police officer who lost his life, he didn't care about none of that. He spent the whole program talking about his murder plan. And what I'm saying, it's time for you guys to stop being quiet, time for you to get that jump start, time for you to get to the group together and realize, God, if this goes through, and I'm not thinking it's going to go through, because we're going to get Gary Norton out of that office, we're going to get him out of that office. But if he gets his way, he can sway people around, might be some changes in, in this office, if you guys don't get up. Same thing with the ladies, sit up and do nothing, and do something.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. You had a question on here, you wanted to know what we're going to do, some of the school board members have already asked that question, and we will be trying inside, but we will again. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else who wants to talk about the phone? It's a... Just wait up the time.
No, President, I only, I only wasn't there because of the wording, you didn't, you know, there. Being called on the carpet, while making errors, you know, wording to go into executive session. So that's, that's my only reason why I hesitated, I wanted to make sure the wording is correct.
If you don't have the time on that, I think it's over there. If you're looking to talk about that, I think it's a little bit difficult. Is that?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I got it. Uh, Madam President, our definition that we intend to make this session for the purpose of, of a resolution, of intention to consider termination of an industry or of an industry's contract.
Is there a second? We will consider that the resolution to authorize a contract with and payment to the School Board, for the purpose of this question, this way. Questions for discussion? Call the board please.
Ms. Westbrook?
Um.
Ms. David Priest?
Yes.
Dr. Keenan?
Yes.
Dr. Hovia?
I'm just looking at the, uh.
Again, as I say, I will, I will, I will, I will, I will. Anyway, okay, we're gonna keep going, but we don't, we don't really do it right.
Can you pass the one which is not, um, in your mind?
Thank you, what have you got now? Your station?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now, I'm in the, I mean, of course, the.